Don Cook.
Here.
Michael Pito.
Here.
Eric Burkhardt.
Yes.
Tim Hunt.
Yes.
Jerry King.
Here. All right. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Can I get a motion to approve? All right, can I have a second? I'll second it. All right. You get that?
Who was the first?
John.
John. Colin Baer.
Hi.
All right.
Next one corresponds to communication.
I have quite a bit. Being a public meeting and this being in our bylaws that we accept public comments for a maximum of five minutes. With the constraints of the pandemic, we let the public, the residents from Greg's, submit comments. So I collected quite a bit of them. I kind of just wanted to give the same commentary that I gave at the November County Planning Board meeting when we referred, when we reviewed this referral, because I think it highlights what the county planning board's role in all of this is. And it kind of clears up some of the fuzziness. So this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. I've seen some rhetoric going back and forth last week that it was a public hearing. It's not, but our bylaws allow us to open it up to five minutes per person comment. But obviously, since not everybody can be here because of pandemic constraints, we've allowed those comments to be sent in the mail. Our planning board plays an advisory role and not a regulatory role. It's just really important that we emphasize that with our viewers and the people attending today. We do not, like, the Town of Greg Planning Board will have the final decision on this project. The purpose of this county planning board is to determine if there's any countywide impact or inter-community impacts. And the county planning, or the county planning department acts as a technical advisor. So we take these reviews or referrals and completely review them based upon their local zoning laws, based upon comprehensive plans that are established. And then we work with other county departments to address any issues that we foresee with traffic, compatibility of adjacent uses, compatibility with existing municipal comprehensive plans, effects on community character and appearance, and impacts on community facilities. So that would be water districts or sewer districts. So I just wanted to kind of highlight those areas that that's the purpose of the county planning board. And that's what we're here today to do, reviewing the referral from the Town of Greg. And our recommendations or their recommendations will be sent on to the Town of Greg to make that final decision. So with that said, I've received quite a few phone calls and I am going to read the comments that were submitted. I did receive a packet from Muriel Purcell. It's a petition of concerned citizens for the Town of Branningham. And we also received those at the November meeting, but this one looks a little different. I just wanted to make note of that. And I did receive a call from a caller this morning who wanted to remain anonymous, that they were concerned about water and invasive species. So I just wanted to make, I told them that I would anonymously submit the comment for them. Muriel Purcell also dropped off a packet of comments along with other information. I'm going to read the ones that I'm assuming she wants me to read. Some of them are emails back and forth that aren't really comments for the referral. So I'm going to read the comments. For this one, it looks like it was from Tom Budar. And I'm going to take the comment from this email. As I mentioned in previous emails, the traffic congestion in and around Old Forge when campers is absolutely crazy on the weekends. Fortunately, residents can get around using South Shore Road. We only have Branningham Road as our main entry. If this campground goes through, we would have to seriously consider selling our property. This comment is from Joanne and John Lumber. We are writing to you today to express our opposition to the proposed campground. Any campground, public or private, would be fundamentally compatible with the historically single-family nature of homes and camps in Branningham. Is our hope that the planning board will reject any application for a campground. This one is from Bob and Rosemary Bratt. We have a camp on North Shore Road very close to the boat launch. One of the major concerns about this proposed new campground is the increased congestion that 32 new campsites will bring to the boat launch area. Even now, on holidays, congestion is way out of control. As you are probably aware, there is no parking at the launch, and boats and trucks must be parked on the road or on a private property in the area. There are either, they are either blocking traffic or trespassing. On several occasions, I have attempted to call the sheriff to come and issue tickets to these vehicles. I can only imagine what 32 new campsites will add to this congestion at the boat launch area, not only to the neighbors, but to anyone who uses North Shore Road. This includes fire and rescue that need to use the road in an emergency. There seems to be many problems associated with allowing this campground, but I am not aware of any benefits that it will bring to the Branningham community. I hope you will not approve this application. This one is from Maureen Segrew. Again, I'm going through the part that I'm assuming they want to. My name is Maureen Segrew, and my husband Walt and I are part of a group of concerned citizens objecting to the campgrounds that Mike Dolph plans to build on Branningham Road. This will create a great deal of extra traffic with trucks and campers, vehicles pulling boats and ATVs. Branningham Lake is owned by New York State. Consequently, boats and jet ski traffic will increase on the lake, which will be a hazard. Also, the risk of invasive species blocked to the lake by the additional boats. There should be a mandatory washing station implemented. Fire is a big concern with sparks from campfires as well as the smoke. Not only will it be difficult for campers to escape, but fire trucks may have a difficult time getting to the fire. The fire could easily burn all of the homes in the nearby area. There will also be a dumping station, septic systems, and possibly more wells drilled. This can all affect water or to the homes in the area. This next one is from Muriel Purcell. Actually, that's a letter to the, I don't know if you wanted me to read that, you know, it's a letter to the Branningham Community Association. I had just thought you wanted to read the letter to the Branningham Association.
Oh, I think I probably got that on my computer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. This one submits that their main concern is the road used for hauling camping things. It would need major, time-consuming work for the next year or more. The shoulders are terrible now and impossible to see at night with lights from the other direction. This is a letter submitted by Don and Linda Higgins of 8429 Cottage Road. I communicated with Robert McLean earlier regarding the association's response to the request for financial support for the legal battle against the campground. My caution at the time is that the association contributed, it would be by taking sides. So they went through a whole list of lake pollution risks. As I stated, as stated by Muriel, it is unknown how many additional watercraft would result from the campground or the types. There's no doubt that the craft will come from far and wide, and what their engines hold is impossible to determine. This means that there needs to be established with the town planners and the developer that there will be restrictions regarding the unloading of watercraft into the lake, such as size limitations, time of day, to get access to the boat ramp, et cetera. If the association does not make this case now, then the town and developer, with the town and developer, it will be too late after the project gets go ahead. This will mean that the boat launch will or should be closed and locked, except during specific hours, and that a qualified person should be on hand to manage the flow of watercraft and ensure the engine or other parts are properly cleaned. This means as well that camp owners should be made aware now that there will be a charge for any renter who wishes to use the boat ramp to access the lake. Cottageers should not have to bear the burden of additional costs to maintain the boat ramp. The lake owners, along with the association, have spent a significant amount of time and energy to provide as much protection of the water as possible from boat pollution. This effort could be for none if the renters have access to the lake without adequate policing before they put their watercraft into our lake. Second question is where do the crafts, where do the crafts stay at night? It is unknown how many crafts will be involved. However, one would assume that they will have to take their crafts out after finish playing, since there's no docking after, available on the lake for extra crafts unless a cottageer opens their front as a dump. Cost of policing was a concern, infrastructure cost is a concern. There will be obviously increased traffic on the Branningham Road and roads around the affected areas of the lake. If this causes increased maintenance or if it requires an initial investment to improve the land, who pays for that cost? There are some amount of increase in real estate taxes generated from commercial operation, which the camp should be taxed at, but it'll, but it, but will it cover what will be incurred by the town? If not, the cottagers will bear the brunt of the added costs and the possible tax increases. Risk cost should be considered as part of the development to some larger measure. Where are the beneficiaries? Some developments have long reach of benefits to the community they are located in. One would be excited if it meant that the lake cottage owners would be net beneficiaries. This, unless I am missing something, is not the case. We, in fact, could be negatively impacted by the development and if not managed well, the boat launch could be a disaster for the value of the property. The folks that live in the area of the camp will be very impacted, and their property values and enjoyment of their homes will be destroyed. Water pollution in the area could be affected depending on how they have planned to protect the environment. There are those who benefit directly from being local restaurants, post office, gas sales, the camp owner, and any business that supplies materials to the campground. There are some implications of campground. I trust that their board deliberations have considered these issues. My vote would be for the association to take action. That was submitted by Don and Linda Higgins. This is from Bob and Rosemary Bratt. I think I already read one from them, so I'm going to skip past that one. This one's from Graham Morrison. After reading the email from Ms. Purcell regarding the proposed campsite, there are a number of things that should be done prior to any arbitrary decision on granting the permits to building these sites, the least of which is an environmental impact study that normally takes years to complete and is usually at the expense of the developers. I am a third-party generation family member of a family-owned camp on the South Shore Road and am categorically opposed to the proposal. I know that I am not alone. The most concerning and upsetting impact is the short and long-term environmental impacts, not only to the surrounding areas, but most of all, the fragile ecosystem of the lake. There are already too many boats and jet skis on the lake. To add even as many as 32 or more would not only compromise the lake's waters, shorelines, but the values of the lake's properties that some have been owned for generations dating back to the 1800s. This is the same, Don and Linda. This is from Tricia Harmon. My family has a camp at Branningham. This lake has meant a lot to us over the course of our lives and my mother's childhood as well. We've already noticed increased traffic up here and more boats on the lake. That is small to begin with. This lake is not large enough to tolerate a campground. People will come in boats, jet skis, et cetera, and overpack an already busy lake, not to mention the effect on the ecosystem. I've already been saddened over the last few years with the amount of trees being cut in the area. Renters do not respect the lake as much as people who live here. I am really hoping this campground is not approved. It will be a huge impact if it is. Please take my comments into consideration. Tricia Harmon. This is from Amy Bills. The Branningham area is already congested and at capacity. The proposed campground will increase traffic, vehicle traffic, plus ATV side-by-side strip bikes crowds, not to mention the more boating and jet skiing activity on the small lake. Those already living, recreating their camp, let their kids swim past 20 feet from the shore without worrying about getting chopped by a propeller. The Lewis County Sheriff stated that he does not have the staff to devote any more time to this area. An influx of people will increase the potential for crime and emergency incidents with very little first responders to assist as it is, not to mention the environmental impacts. Decrease in water quality, which is detrimental to the fragile lake and shoreline ecosystems. Air quality impacts from more fires, noise, and light pollution, influx of trash in the dump, more bearing counters, negative impacts to the local water table from constructed wells, and where they are going to put all of the human waste. This idea is money-driven with no concern to local safety and environmental conservation. This is from Julie Tippel. Dear members of the Lewis County Planning Committee and the Town of Greg Planning Committee, I'm writing to you today as a lake, as an owner on Lake of Pines. I am concerned about the proposed campground on Branningham Road. The impact of the campground would have on Branningham Lake and thus the Lake of Pines cannot be overlooked. The Adirondacks have special waterways that need to be protected. There is no full-time boat steward at the lake who can warn people of the danger of invasive species. Therefore, I feel all of the additional visitors will unwittingly bring in damaging species to our water. I also believe that we will have more trespassers at the Lake of the Pines. The beach area at Lake of the Pines is enticing, and we occasionally get trespassers. This will increase with campground, meaning more law enforcement will be needed. Speaking of law enforcement, the police will surely be called more at the campgrounds in town. I hope you have spoken to our local law enforcement and what a potential campground means to them. Finally, and most importantly, please ask yourselves if you want a campground in your backyard, because this is the reality for the residents living in Linda's place and Branningham Road. Their home values will decrease because no one wants to live next to a campground. Please vote against the Branningham campground. This is from Art Holberg. The purpose of my mail is to express my strong opposition to the proposed campsite development just off Branningham Road. As a 31-year-old property owner on the lake, we have seen the area change substantially over the years. Our taxes are higher than ever. There are more full-time residents and seasonal people using the lake for fishing, leisure, and water sport activities. The lake and surrounding roads are crowded as ATVs and snowmobilers often use the roads with little respect for bicycles, walkers, and runners. In my opinion, adding a campground with RVs and campers will further add to the congestion on the lake and surrounding community. The campers will be temporary folks who may not respect the lake and what we have there. Please consider my opinion and do the right thing, vote against this unnecessary development. Enough is enough. Julie Holberg. As a longtime summer resident of Branningham Lake community and as a property owner for over 30 years, I write to express my strong opposition to the campground cabin proposal. There is no question that such an addition to our area would overwhelm the serenity and health of the lake, which is my primary concern. As more and more renters have frequented the lake, it is obvious that those with less of a commitment to the lake are less apt to be stakeholders in its care. The wildlife looms in particular are at a great risk of leaving our area as more and more traffic interferes with their habitat. There is no question the safety of humans on the water is also at risk. There's more jet skis and speedboats, more high-acting, sailing, paddleboarding, even swimming increasingly dangerous. A small Adirondack lake has its limits. Progress is not necessarily about taking down trees, adding noise and garbage, additional sewage and waste, as well as increased traffic. I value the quality of life that is historic at Branningham Lake. Please see that this request is heard by those making the decision. I join with the majority of property owners, absolutely not. This comment was submitted by Corinne Cunningham. I am writing in regards to the proposed campground in Branningham North. My family and I have been here for over 40 years and have owned our camp for 14. We are there year-round and have seen firsthand the many changes throughout the years. Branningham Lake is full of many memories for us. We are so lucky to be able to spend so much time there. It's peaceful, beautiful, and a place to go where any personal troubles we may have go away. We want our family to enjoy it for many years to come, but your campground will be the nail in the coffin for our children's future at Branningham. Branningham is a small community, and we have already witnessed firsthand the negative effects of the increase in residents' homes there. As a family, we have taken many walks around the loop because of all of the new construction at Orchard Ridgeville Road. We can no longer do this as safely as we have in the past. A lot of people coming to the area don't respect it. They drive too fast on the roads and put our kids and pets at risk every day. When we walked in, when we walked in the past, we may not have had one or two cars pass us. Now it's flying down the road. The increase in traffic will only get worse, more people visiting the area. We will no longer be able to allow our kids to safely ride bikes or walk to the store. The lake can't afford all of this new traffic as it is. Adding more potential boaters will make the already small lake very unsafe and very difficult for a sheriff to maintain a safe environment. Tubing and skiing will almost be out of the picture on the weekends, which is a shame. Greed has already taken over Branningham. The number of trees being cleared for all of the new properties resemble what we have seen in Dr. Jefferson's book, The Lorax. Knowing that even more trees will be cleared is beyond signifying. Branningham can only sustain so much. We are at this point. Branningham is an amazing place, and we want to continue to flourish for many years to come. This campground will have a negative impact on both community safety and environmental conservation. We say no to the campground and hope that the right decision is made. Tracy Miller submitted a request that the county planning board deny the special permit request of the proposed campground for Branningham Road. Reasons I'm requesting that are including, and that the watch provide an increase in traffic, 12 cabins and 20 RV sites would translate into at least 150 people, perhaps more, that would want access to an already overcrowded Branningham lake with little to no public parking at the public boat launch. Where will they park? Wherever they can find a spot and likely where they should park, which will cause congestion and problems for those in and around the lake. Any impacts to the road and other infrastructure would come about as a result, as a result of the influx of people. Should the county approve their request, would it be at the expense of local taxpayers, not those staying at the proposed campground? This is unfair and unwanted by our residents. Due to COVID, many of the towns' meetings where the campground was discussed initially went on behind closed doors with little to no public input. It was only on the, at the 11th hour that most residents became aware of any such campground was being proposed, and they don't want it. Any development of this type inside the Adirondack Park would likely be denied. The fact that it's about a quarter mile down the road from the edge of the Adirondack Park should be no different, especially when the impact of allowing such a campground will be a direct impact on the land and owners' residence of the Adirondack Park, which is where those staying on the campground will go directly to the lakes, et cetera, in the Adirondack Park. You, as our elected public officials, owe it to all of your constituents to do what is best for the communities in the county. Please take your time fully to vet the frozen pounds allowing such a campground. The decision you will make will have a lasting effect on the peaceful enjoyment of your permanent residence for eternity. Let me take a little break. This letter is to inform you that all concern, you all concerned that my wife, Joanne, and I completely oppose the pub, the proposed public campground in the Town of Greg on Branningham Road. My wife and I own a full-year-round home on Link Cliff Road in Branningham. We, along with most Branningham residents, are completely against the idea of creating a public campground anywhere near Branningham, let alone right out our doorstep. I have been coming to Branningham since I, since the year I was born, 1952. And my wife is a direct descendant of the original Branningham, who purchased what was then Fish Lake from the Indians back in 1775. Branningham has always been called the jewel of the Adirondacks, and for a good reason. The lake and area surrounding it is one of the cleanest and secluded lakes in the Adirondacks. There are already too many extra-large boats and various watercraft on the lake, not only from lakefront owners, but also from many renters. The lake water is very clean and well-stocked with fish at the residents' expense. We are also a grandfathered lake meeting that the area is sprayed for mosquitoes and other insects several times a year at the residents' expense. If the proposed campground is approved, it would effectively destroy our community and lake with overcrowding and a total misuse of our natural resources. And even worse, it would devalue our property values and make Branningham a much less desirable place to live and/or vacation. Tell me, Kippen, who's going to pay for the extra policing of the lake and community? And who's going to pay to make certain that our area voters are required to get their watercraft washed by the boat washer owned by the B.C. Net, the Branningham Lake Association? Simply put, if the proposed campground is approved, we as community will have no choice but to sue all of those who make that possible. Thank you for your consideration, and positive response will be greatly appreciated. Glenn Lessie. This is from Andrea Jones. As a property owner on Branningham Lake, I am concerned about the impact of the proposed campground. Although I understand the potential for economic gain, there will be irreparable damage to the ecosystem in and around the lake. I feel that this will change the character of the lake and surrounding area negatively. The environmental impact in and around the lake will be significant as boats bring in invasive species like zebra mussels and milkweed that have done significant damage to many other lakes. As we are all aware, the lake gets more and more crowded every year, making it more and more dangerous. I'm sure we are not the only ones that have boats come dangerously close to the dock while we are swimming, not to mention shore damage. Many of the lakes, so, many times the lake is so crowded, we don't take our boat out as it is too stressful. I shudder to think what can happen to our beautiful lake. Therefore, I categorically oppose the proposed campground if they are going to access the lake. This is from Jan Markham. I am a long-term camping property owner at Cottage Road at Branningham Lake and want to let you know I oppose the proposed campground based on many factors, including the additional roadway and lake traffic. I appreciate that others may want to enjoy our community. However, the infrastructure simply doesn't support such a development, particularly our roads and additional traffic on the lake, which creates safety and environmental hazards. In order to avoid such consequences and additional unintended consequences, we need to stop this proposal. Please enter this, please enter this email stating my opposition to the proposed campground into the official record. This is from Sue Lorenzini. We write to express our deepest disapproval of a special use permit for the proposed campground. A residential area is no place for a campground of this proposed size or of any size. Branningham is a small lake, and the increase in boat traffic alone would be dangerous, as well as a threat to the health of the water for introduction of invasive species. The availability of water has been an issue more and more frequently over the years, and a business of this size should be substantial drain on the water table. The increased traffic on Branningham Road would have quite a negative impact on the road as well. There's also the danger of fire when you have that many campers all in a large campground with fire pits, et cetera. People who own camps in Branningham and those who rent camps know that great care is expected of them in order to safeguard the lake and its surroundings, and everyone willingly does their part. No one likes to put a damper on a new business, but this proposal is simply irresponsible. There are better places for a campground than in the middle of a residential area, ID where the old Glen Greg campgrounds used to be and many much larger lakes that could handle a campground. Branningham Lake is not one of them. Those property owners who care about Branningham and would like to see it continue to be beautiful, spa is always, it's always been, we are urging you to reject this proposal. I'm a prop, this is from Sandra Markham. I am a property owner of Branningham Lake, and I write to ask if the Lewis County Planning Board does not approve the application for the proposed campground. Kelly Gates. We, Andy and Kelly Gates, owners of property on Branningham Lake and North Shore Road, are writing in opposition to special permit. The Town, the Town of Greg is seeking for the proposed Branningham Road campground. We have owned our property for 10 years. We are concerned about the safety of the area, not only on the roads, but on the water as well. Branningham Road is a narrow road and will not be able to handle the large amount of traffic, RVs, et cetera. The lake will see a large increase in the amount of boats and jet skis, causing it to be dangerous on the water. We are extremely concerned about how dangerous this situation will be on the roads and water. In closing, we are opposed to the proposed Branningham Road campground due to the unsafe and dangerous situation it will cause. This is from, the email says Jamo, Jamo, James Jones, Jr. I am writing on behalf of our family, owners of a Branningham lakefront camp at, on Cottage Road since 1970. As for my background, I was a Town of Lee Planning Board member from 1996 to 2018, and I am a Town of Lee Councilman from 2018 to present. My family is very much opposed to the proposal as it will definitely have a detrimental impact on the surrounding area as well as our currently pristine lake. As a part of our criteria, we have to judge a proposal and said impact, as well as any changes to the character of the neighborhood. Again, this will change our lake as we know it. I also believe this, his long form seeker would have a negative impact overall. I understand that Mr. Dolph has purchased 18-plus acres of land, some within the Adirondack Park. While he may say he is not developing any of the park acreage, he will be impacting plenty of park land from the campground itself up the hill to include Branningham Lake. Water usage is just another problem we see, as I have heard estimates approaching 10,000 gallons a day. With another dry summer, I could see several wells in the area having problems. While I have not seen a plan of this proposal, I would be interested to know if this is just phase one of a multi-year phase project that might include purchase of additional acreage. There's also been a rumor that the applicant has purchased property adjoining to the inland of a private boat launch at the lake. He has, this has been denied, but I have seen plenty of options to buy contingent on planning board approval. This would be two-part campers, boat, trailers, and vehicles. Our lake is already overcrowded with jet skis, water skiers, tubers, and fast boats. To add another group of voters who are only there for a few days at concentrated grid times, I do believe that we will see incidents and accidents. We can only hope none will be faked. Another potential problem is the introduction of zebra mussels or milkweed. It's just a matter of time before these watercraft infect our lake as they travel to camp. With such high-density housing, water uses and waste disposal, and general overcrowding of our fragile area, I do hope that you will take those items to heart and realize that there is a significant impact to our neighborhood. Please recommend to the Greg Planning Board that this proposal should not be approved. This was submitted by Glenn and Mary Greeds. We would like to state our opposition to the campground. Our main concerns are increase, one, increased water usage that will affect all residents in the area; two, wear and tear on Branningham Road and North Shore Road, narrow roads that accommodate walkers and bicyclers, in addition to more vehicle traffic; three, as lifelong campers ourselves, we use the state park system. We realize that camping can increase noise level and fire department issues. Noise is a factor. It does not seem fair that the town taxpayers would have to bear the policing burdens. I would ask that if there is some plan for 24-hour supervision of this campground by the owner and private policing. Our very greatest concern is for the welfare of our lake. As you know, there's no parking for cars and trailers allowed on North Shore Road unless the owner plans to build- the owner plans to build a parking lot on a private property. Boats and trailers would have to park back at the campground. This does not seem feasible and I would believe that they will not do this. The increased use of our lake by vehicles that come from other bodies of water will increase the chances of invasive species entering the lake. Boat traffic on the lake is already heavy in July and August, so policing of the lake will need to occur daily to make sure that the voters are operating watercraft safely and legally. The boat launch for the lake is not set up for multiple launches at a time. Increased traffic, people are blocking traffic on North Shore Road while they are waiting to launch the boat. And then Wayne and Joanna Daly submitted a comment and they just, they asked that I share images. If I can get this mouse. Um, I'm sorry? If you'd like, if you can, thanks, Joe. No, that's, that's fine. So, dear Lewis County Planning Board, we are writing in reference to the application, SP 1-20, Michael Dahlhoff, Branningham, New York campground, we have cabins and RV sites. We have submitted three letters to the town planning board regarding concerns of the campground. We feel the town has failed to take our concerns into consideration and are hoping that the board serves as a more appropriate and less biased group of individuals. Attached to this letter are pictures that have been taken from the property markers defining our property to that of which the campground will be built. We are hoping that the pictures provide a more accurate and visual representation of the closeness of this campground will be to our home. This campground will be visible from our home. We ask that you clearly understand this when moving forward with recommendations that are developed. Our livelihoods and quality of life will grossly, will be grossly affected by this campground. Please, please understand this. We have previously proposed that the property, that a property fence be built around the property line of the campground to separate that property from ours. A fence will serve to help stop trespassing. Decreasing trespassing will increase the sense of safety for our family, animals, and property. It has been noted that one town planning board member commented about this, however, they were not, there were not formal recommendations developed. Mr. Dahlhoff has stated that he will plant four-foot to six-foot trees to serve as a barrier, which will be a benefit in 20 years after they have taken full growth. They will provide little barrier over the course of the next several years. Let's be really realistic about this. The only request we have as a people who will be most affected by this is that a privacy, a privacy fence be built, not only for privacy, but for protection. How can the town ensure that our property value will not be adversely affected by the campground? There was absolutely no mention of this whatsoever in any town planning board meetings. As many of the concerned community members have asked, how can we be assured that our water supply will not be affected by the campground? We have never had any issues with our water supply to date, never. It is also noted that two previous owners of our property, which both had large families, also did not have any water issues. I will be maintaining a copy of this letter and receipt of email that this issue has been documented should we experience any water issues with our well in the foreseeable future. And again, she submitted several pictures. I wonder if I can read it down over there. All right, so, those are the comments on that portion of the agenda.
Well.
Do you want to add anything? I'm just gonna move it to the, there you go.
Do we want any open discussion?
Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment? Each person will have five minutes to do so.
My name is Maureen Segru. Bailey's are going to, gonna be 75 feet from that campground. They will see everything and hear everything. We have children who pull 40-foot and longer camps. They told us, you don't want this. It is too noisy. The smoke from the fires are what you're gonna get. And the worst thing for us is the water. They can easily, and he's allowed to frack, easily affect all of the wells that he breaks It is not a good place for a campground. He is in amongst all of a residential area. If anyone would like to buy our home, we'd be glad to sell it to you if you let them have it. The problem also is that our Greg Planning Board has accepted his application. Our lawyer, as you can see, we gave you the paperwork from him, all of the items that he did not do, kept ignoring to do, and they still passed his application. The DEC and the Health Department have not signed off on it yet. So we have a lot of things that need to be taken care of and hopefully, in the long run, he doesn't get that property for a campground. He can put it somewhere else where he will not affect all these people. And we used to live on Branningham Lake and there, at that time, and that was 10 years ago, there were a lot of boats, lot of traffic, and now it's even worse. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Gentleman here.
There's an underground stream that runs across that property and then it goes all across into the residential area on my property and then it works its way down the hill behind all the homes that are on the Branningham Road. The question is, if that's, your septic system leaks into that stream, it will pollute my $11,000 well and probably pollutes some of the wells that are on the side of the hills that go down. What ramifications do we have if that happens?
Can I just have your name so that we can put it in the minutes?
Walton Segru.
Okay.
Okay. And I just have a question. I know you have, I have seen you handling the map of the campground itself, but do you have an overall map of exactly where this campground is going to be in relationship to all the residential houses? So you should be able to see how much of a disturbance that this is going to be. It's not just one thing that is wrong with this entire project. It's, it's so many things. Like Maureen said, the water, my well is 435 feet in the ground, over $10,000, probably 15 years ago. Now what happens when he starts drawing 10,000 gallons of water minimum out of the ground within spitting distance of my well and he's going to be drawing this daily? I mean, there, there are some very serious issues that, and I don't know who has to address them, but I'm certainly hoping that someone will. As you know, I sent you all the, I didn't send you everything from the attorney, but I sent you the last two correspondences and one of the attorney's comments was, "He has never dealt with a more unprofessional town board as the town of Greg."
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Anne Anthony. I've been at Branningham for more than 60 years and we own one of the oldest cottages on Cottage Road. And all of the letters have already spoken to the kind of impacts that my family is concerned about. Initially, obviously, the people that are going to be living in immediate proximity to the campground are going to have the quiet use and enjoyment as their deed indicates. Made to be a very difficult situation for them. It's an unfair wrapping around of where this thing is going to be located into the area behind their homes. Smoke, absolutely. Fire potential, absolutely. We run a volunteer fire department up there. That's asking a lot of volunteers. And when fire gets started, it goes and it goes very, very quickly. And we've seen that damage occur. You can drop a house in a matter of, of minutes because everything is dry, everything is old, and everything is fragile as a result. In addition to that, the lake has gotten, over the 60 years that I've been looking at it, and I have older siblings that have been up there even longer still. Our family has been there a long time. We are surrounded by other neighbors that have been there a long time. And we've seen the gradual development. There are certainly more people that are year-rounders, but those of us that have a quote-unquote "summer cottage," we're not just summer people that come up to simply recreate. We've been there a long time with the goal of preserving and protecting and defending the quality of the lake, the quality of the environment, and preserving it for our children in general, for the community as a whole. I get that there's financial benefit potentially there for the people that are directly involved with it, for restaurants and other places around the lake, and I'm very sympathetic to that fact. But I think that it's a small lake, but close by is Lake Bonecart. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. They are overrun with water chestnuts and the, that came from voters bringing vehicles into the lake that had not been adequately washed and addressed. And it doesn't take much to get it started, but believe me, it takes an awful lot to undo it once it's begun. An invasive species can in turn, not only wreck the quality of your water, but make it impossible for some of the normal animals, fish, et cetera, that rely on the water to be able to maintain that. I, I think we also have to recognize that there's a long-term consequence here, that once you get something like this started and you have a lot of people that do not have, they don't have any stake in what's there. They're coming to use, they're coming to enjoy, but we don't know if they have a license, for example, to drive a boat like I had to get from Joe LeBeck a million years ago. We don't know if they know the rules of regs on the lake. We've already seen people going at full speed with their jet skis through the channel between the lake and the pond. My father used to be in charge of the water level in the lake. Now that's being set, set once a year by the town and oftentimes that water level has become too high. Last year it was low because we didn't get a lot of rain and it did affect a lot of the wells along Cottage Road. A lot of people had to do mitigation steps in order to maintain water in their facilities. The leach field that would be required in order to address the sanitary issues in a project of this size would be substantial. And that too, not only for the underground river that the gentleman spoke of, the wells, but water moves, water runs downhill. You're talking singing waters, Otter Creek, the Black River, the Independence River. The effect that could begin with seemingly something as innocuous as this could spread and slowly affect a lot of the ecosystems beyond the lake itself. I think there's a lot of traffic on the lake. There's a concern about safety, obviously. It's very difficult to maintain a space where children and, you know, people that are just standing around the water to cool off can be and stay safely. Someone mentioned waterskiing. It's very difficult to do that during most of the time on the weekends because there's just too many craft to avoid. We've already had a couple of accidents over the years on the road. We've had a couple of accidents on the water. It doesn't take much to create a catastrophe. But environmentally, what might not appear to be a big deal could become a big deal. And then the expense of trying to undo that, if it's even possible, is, it's tremendous. You're talking not hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars to rid a beautiful, pristine, spring-fed lake of something like water chestnuts, the zebra mussels, the milk oil. These are significant issues and there are other lakes as close by, for example, as the Lake Bonecart that can attest to. Once it gets started, it is almost impossible to stop. Also, there is no public beach. There are no public facilities. There is no place for anyone that isn't a guest of someone who owns property along the lake to go to have a break moment, which again, can have a major effect. There's no place to park these vehicles. It impacts not only the places that are going to be immediately adjacent to the location of this, but also those places that are immediately adjacent to the boat launch. And it's a tremendous imposition on those people to put up with the amount of traffic. I'm sure a big draw of the concept of campground is the lake and the lake is within the park. It is a privately owned lake in the sense that somebody owns pieces along its shore and it's up to us to preserve those and what we do affects it. You can put a dye into your well and you want to make sure that you don't see that dye come out of the lake. But all of that water table, it's all interconnected and it runs downhill. You're talking about affecting farmers down here in Loudell. You're talking about all kinds of things that will spread from what's being proposed. And while I, I really do have sympathy for the concept that everybody would like to come and enjoy, it is a great place to be. We have to be very careful to preserve and protect what's there because once something gets started, it may be irreversible. And there's a large tax base that comes from the owners along that lake. We may not all have the opportunity to vote in Lewis County, but we certainly have a strong and substantial interest in preserving the beauty and specialness of this place. And I fortunately could be here today when a lot of the people that live along the lake are not able to be here today. The timing of some of this has been unfortunate in terms of really being able to get a honest opinion from the both of the people that are, are living up there. There's a lot of people that grew up in Loudell that have full-time residences up there now. There's a lot of people that come from Watertown, that come from close-by areas. They're longstanding, familiar faces and they are very concerned. We are all very concerned about the long-term impacts that may not be immediately visible, but are very likely to be the outcome of something as large as this and that involves as many people as this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, Maureen.
On behalf of, on behalf of the largest adjacent landowner for this property, the county of Lewis, I would just like to make a comment that the county has expended large sums of money on behalf of all taxpayers in Lewis County to improve the adjacent property about 60 acres that is used as a recreational parcel for people all, all across Lewis County. We are making these public investments in our trail system, in outdoor recreation, because we believe that is what the future of Lewis County is. And when we make public investments, we do so in the hope that a developer, a job creator comes along and builds beside it and makes a private investment. And that's exactly what Mr. Dahlhoff is, you know, planning to do here. That's what the county had in mind when we develop parcels like this. We develop parcels like this so that it'll expand the tax base, create jobs, and we recognize that the logging industry and papermaking and a lot of the things that established this community many years ago are probably industries that are not likely to come back. And the future of this community is more likely to be centered around recreation and taking advantage of the great natural resources that we have, which is why the county has made investments that it has made up in Branningham. And so, as an adjacent landowner, the county would support the project and would be grateful to work with Mr. Dahlhoff to get more of the public access to public property that we have already expended funds. we have already expended funds on for.
We only allow, I mean, obviously, we've kind of thought over that. We only allow one public five minutes. I'm sorry, I've never had to do that before. We're going on almost, you know.
Michael Young, I'm the attorney for Mr. Dahlhoff. I'm going to start with a couple. A, Mr. Dahlhoff's a resident in that area. He's not here to destroy. Second, fear being known is the greatest fear, and all I've heard today is fear, this is going to happen, or that's going to happen, or you think that's going to happen. No one's drawing a vote. And my final first comment is I'm tired of hearing about the attorney from outside the area and all the experts outside the area. We worked at this for months, and we had an engineer who's licensed, who's a resident of this county, do the work, and suggested, and don't know what we're doing. Offensive. Yeah, I'm, the simple fact of the matter is, this is a year-round project. It is not simply the lake. It is, as the county manager pointed out, take advantage of other resources, snowmobile, trails, things of that sort. It suggests that 32 families of people are going to show up, and all of them are going to have boats. It's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous to suggest that everyone's going to come up here towing a boat. It's not what it is. It's not built for that. We want to point out the campground is a significant distance from the lake, but to suggest people are going to come up and pull every day down to the area, just isn't realistic. Mr. Dahlhoff realizes our issues. He's taken steps to try to mitigate everything, and he's willing to work with people. But instead of sitting down and talking about it, all we hear are the threats, such as the threat I heard today, that if you don't get our way, we're going to sue. That's what they have to do, and so be it. But to suggest that Mr. Dahlhoff and those who support this don't care about the community is unfair to them. And to suggest that the people that are coming are all going to just come up here and destroy the area is offensive to them and the type of people that would come to a campground. But you remember, they may not have a hundred, $200,000 house, and people with RVs, very expensive vehicles. They take care of it, and they travel, and they know that if they misuse property, they won't be invited back. So to suggest that they're going to come up here and just abuse the place is, again, quite frankly, discriminatory. I can't think of a better word. Suggest that these people are just going to come up here and rape Lewis County is unfair to them. But we're a welcoming county. Apparently, we're not. I don't mean to be negative, but my client has taken abuse for months. Fortunately, I've only been at it for a few months, so it hasn't been an effect. But to listen to all this and to feed on fear, instead of sitting down and trying to see what we can do, my client knows the neighbors are going, there's issues with fence and those type of things, and he's prepared to make accommodations. And to suggest that he's going to drain the lake or drain the community, the Town of Greg did its own ideological study years ago and proved that that rumor, that myth was false. So I think my client has worked within the law. He didn't go someplace and was asking for a variance or anything else. He's taking, he's working within the law of the Town of Greg in this county, not going someplace where it wasn't put. The elected officials voted, put people on a board, and then voted for that zoning law for what it is, and he is not violating the zoning law. And that's the question we have here. Is it a permitted use? And the answer to that, very simply, is yes. Thank you.
I think we've heard from everybody except for Nick, so we're going to move along, unless Nick has something to say.
All right. Okay, so we've obviously seen something very similar to this before, last fall. What are, can you just tell me a quick summary before you go into reading through this, what are the substance of changes since the last time?
Do we want to go through just quickly, just already we're part of officers?
Or you want to highlight what's changed and not changed?
Sure, yep. Let me pull that up. Because I wasn't prepared for that question. So some of you weren't aware, but we actually, at the county planning board, reviewed this project. There's been some minimal changes to the project since November, but we did review this project as submitted to us by the Town of Greg in November. I did provide a technical review, as I always do, to our county planning board members, and in that, we reviewed the compatibility of adjacent uses, which I can go through if the board would like me to go through, just to give everybody an idea of how extensive we have actually looked at this project. We didn't just look at this and say, the county wants it, we're going to proceed with it. We look at this from their zoning perspective as well, okay? And for the ways that, or for the reasons that I addressed in the beginning, compatibility of adjacent uses, impact on additional traffic and all of that. So I'll go through that, just so everybody has an update, because there was a couple of significant updates, just with more information. The applicant submitted revised site plans that include the construction of eight two-bedroom cabins, four one-bedroom cabins, 20 travel trailer sites with utilities for overnight and/or temporary rental, and one 24-foot by 24-foot building for laundry and office space, along with a 40-foot by 60-foot timber pavilion and an onsite bathhouse. The zoning for the proposed property is identified as a hamlet, and half the property is in rural residential one. By definition, this use is presumed to be considered a campground travel trailer park, and the proposed facility does comply with the intent of Article 4, subsection 405 of the Town of Greg Allowed Uses. It is an allowed use within that zone. Side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks have all been met. The last applicant, or the last referral that we reviewed, the front yard setback was only 133 feet, and they have increased that to the 150 feet that are required, so that is a change from the last application to them. They have corrected that condition that we set forth. Based upon the submitted site plans, the proposed action is compliant with those setback requirements in Article 6, subsection 655. According to page three of the FEAF, which is the full environmental assessment form, the proposed action will consist of three phases. That was a question of one of the comments. The application would anticipate the beginning phase one in May of 2021, constructing four cabins and 10 travel trailer sites, one office and the water and laundry building, one bathhouse and a recreational area by October 2022. The second phase is anticipated to begin in November 2022 and would consist of constructing six cabins and 10 travel trailer sites during a 12-month period. Phase three would follow with construction of two final cabins and a pavilion and pond. All phases would be complete by October 2024. The corridor is primarily rural and residential uses, however, there are several commercial and residential and recreational land uses within a one-mile radius of the action site to include restaurants, bars, summer camps, and a golf course. For traffic generation effect, the applicant has proposed two 60-foot wide driveway entrances from County Route 42 roughly 160 feet apart. While the seeker form does note in anticipated driveway permit application date, which was a condition that we set on our last review of April 1st, 2021, prior to construction, evidence of said permit should be provided to the Town of Greg zoning enforcement officer. That is something that would be done in any case. Additionally, as noted in Article 6, subsection 655E, access to all sites shall be consistent with the standards set forth in the policies and standards for entrances to state highways. Again, that's something that they would have to comply with before going forward or before being issued a zoning permit. Being that the proposed action is located on County Route 42, as part of this review, this Lewis County Highway Superintendent was consulted. The roadway is currently standard width with a 40 mile an hour speed limit change nearby the property. County Route 42 is a functional 20-foot wide class nine low-volume local road with an AADT traffic count of 1,209 cars per day. After conducting a site visit and line of site analysis, the Lewis County Highway Superintendent again concluded, because in November, the previous highway superintendent came to the same conclusion, that the proposed driveway details are acceptable and that there are no concerns to the impact of the road with this proposed use. It is suggested that the western driveway is designated as the entry, and the eastern driveway is designated as the exit to the facility. Additionally, it is suggested that there is one-way traffic flow for the cabin portion of the project area. Did you want to speak to that, Tim?
When I went out and measured the site distance, I did want to mention that based on that site distance, I looked at the ASCHO standards, and it requires for passenger cars 450 feet, and for tractor trailers, 680. And I measured the full 680 feet, and it has plenty of site distance for even the largest vehicles.
So as you can see, we've done our due diligence in being a county road to look into those lines of site concerns or the use and the increase in traffic. It should be noted that the county does not have authority to reduce the speed limits, but if the proposed action is approved and built, the highway superintendent can recommend that the area have a speed reduction. This will need to be handled and approved by New York State DOT in a specific formula that is used to inform the site changers. So that can even be done until after they can, it can be proven that there's an increase in traffic. As noted on page 12, Part 1 of the submitted seeker, the applicant has identified that the proposed action is not located in nor does it adjoin a state-listed critical environmental area, and while the project site is currently used for hunting, the proposed action will not affect that use. According to the submitted seeker, the applicant identified that the proposed project site is not located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Inventory. The proposed action site abuts 84 acres of Lewis County-owned land that hosts a variety of multi-use trails to include walking, biking, ETB, and snowmobile trails. This action would support the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan, specifically Policy Area 1 Tourism and Recreation. For signage, the revised site plan did not include a sign rendering or location. According to the submitted referral, a site plan will be applied for at a later date. Prior to installation of that reference, sign complacency with Article 5, subsection 5 O E is required. That is consistent with our previous review. For drainage and erosion, according to the submitted seeker, the proposed action is not located within the 100-year flood plain, does not contain wetlands and underwater bodies, and has a 0% to 10% slope dwell drain soil. The applicant has noted that there will be 10 acres of ground disturbance, and since any land disturbance over one acre in size requires compliance with New York State DDC regulations, a speed ease permit, the FEAF notes a projected application date of April 1st, 2021 for said permit. That is also something we referenced as a condition on our last review. We cannot make him get that permit before our recommendation, but we can make it a condition on your recommendation that they receive that permit, which they can't afford the project until they get that DDC permit anyway. That of which they've listed this time on the seeker, that they will be complying with. Each camper site is 88 foot by 75 feet with an approximate camper location dimension of 10 foot by 50. The exact location of the campers will be finalized upon further review of existing trees and topography limitations. It appears that all proposed cabin sites meet that 8% max among slope regulations set in Article 6, subsection 655E. However, there are five camper sites that exceed slightly the 8% slope threshold, and that was one of our recommendations on the last review. Since that review, according to the communication provided by TTS professional engineers, the actual location of the individual camper sites will be graded to a level or near-level condition. Additionally, all sites are on extremely well-drained soils and free of flood hazard. It is also noted that runoff from the sites will be directed alongside the road to the retention pond. According to the submitted seeker, there will be about a half acre of impervious surfaces added to the property by the camping unit groups, and the stormwater will be directed to an onsite retention pond. But the seeker does note that it, the applicant anticipates applying for a swift permit in April of 2021, this month. Prior to construction, a copy of that permit should be sent to the Town of Greg Planning Board and Zoning Officer. The proposed action will result in the empowerment of a liquid, such as the creation of a water supply, whether it's water pond, lake, waste lagoon, and/or storage. The purpose of said empowerment is noted for water treatment and a decorative pond feature located near the recreational pavilion. The submission notes that this pond will be 60-foot in diameter and approximately five foot deep with landscaping around the perimeter. To comply with New York State Department of Health regulations, the applicant does intend to add no swimming signs. Well water will be used to fill the pond, and a submersible pump will be added to area of water by use of pond-like feature. For parking, each cabin camper site is located along the 25-foot private driveway. The cabins are fitted with individual 20-foot by 30-foot parking areas, and the camper site driveway is equipped with a 120-foot by 20-foot hammerhead turnaround. The proposed action is compliant with Article 6, subsection 655A. For community facilities, the seeker notes that the proposed action will use or create a new demand for roughly 4,450 gallons of water per day. I just want to highlight that some of the comments included 10,000 per day. I'm not sure where they got that, but according to the application and the engineer report, it was 4,450 gallons of water per day. Public water, wastewater facilities will not be used, and according to the submitted site plan, there will be three septic systems added to the project, and it appears that the two existing wells will be utilized. So again, there will be no well drilling. They will be utilizing existing wells. As noted in Article 6, subsection 655F, all water supply and sewage dispersal systems shall comply with the applicable standards of this law, Town Sanitary Code, and State of New York Department of Health and Environmental Conservation requirements. That is consistent with our last recommendation that those things can't really be done until after we send our recommendations out to the town. While there is a bathhouse proposed for the project, the applicant should confirm that this facility will provide at least one toilet, lavatory, and shower for each exit in order to comply with the articles in the zoning. Aside from the overhead connection to the national grid pole on County Route 42, all electrical lines will be underground. It is assumed that these onsite electrical lines will not only provide for onsite lighting, but for travel trailer connections to avoid noise pollution from generators. This assumption should be confirmed with the applicant's approval. Lighting, outdoor lighting details were noted in this referral on page eight of the submitted full environmental assessment form and through the communication from the engineer report. Each cabin will have an exterior motion light sensor installed above the entryway, and each camper site will have a pedestal light installed. All lighting will be low-intensity directional lighting to avoid effects on addition properties. Additionally, there will be low-intensity entrance lights installed on the side of the driveways. For landscaping, a majority of the wooded area will remain intact, and according to the submission, there will be an estimated 92 conifer trees, six deciduous trees removed for the construction of the roadway camper sites and camping sites. Approximately 33 trees will be planted in the neighboring homes lined up site for additional screening. And I'll show you those maps after I'm done reading this last section. Additionally, while the submitted site plan identifies that the woods will remain between road line and the camp setbacks, according to Article 6, subsection 655, adequate landscaping should be provided along all public roads. The Town of Greg Planning Board should review and define their expectations and requirements of said screening requirements, and the applicant should comply with that Article, Article 6 and Article 8. So I'm going to, again, the site plans haven't changed much this mouse. Oh, this mouse, sorry guys.
Tim?
Yeah?
Cassie?
You guys can go on to discuss, yes.
I'm supposed to be someplace else before, okay? Maybe background of Tim's comment. Cassie, could you remind us, what did we do last time?
Yep.
And what major changes might there be?
Yes. So the last, in November, the county planning board recommended to approve with a set of conditions. The first condition was that the applicant should comply with the required 150-foot road line setbacks for all buildings. They have corrected that, so that one is taken off. The last recommendation was to, was about the road line landscaping. We kept that, I kept that on there. We kept that, I, I kept that on there as something that the Town of Gregg needs to define further, their expectations. However, in that same recommendation, we also asked that they, the submitted site plan notes that the woods and trees will remain in the setback buffer areas, and the applicant should not minimize the natural buffers and should increase the screening buffer. And it appears that they had, they're adding thirty-three trees in that, in that little corner. So that one has, that portion of that recommendation has been corrected. We revised prior to construction, a driveway permit should be obtained from the Lewis County Highway Department for the review of County Route Forty-two shoulders and caution signs should be completed by the highway superintendent prior to construction. We have revised that to, that they need to get evidence of that Lewis County Highway Department driveway permit should, and it should be provided to the Town of Gregg Planning Board and Zoning Enforcement Officer prior to construction. We added, or we're suggesting the addition, that the western driveway is designated as the entry and the eastern driveway is designated as the exit to the facility, and that it is a one-way flow around cabin sites. This one's the same. We have revised about the fourteen point four acres of ground disturbance. They altered that to ten acres of ground disturbance. And obviously, anything more than one acre requires compliance with DDC. So we, we just made note that they noted that they are aware that they need DDC permit. They corrected the slope when they, when the engineer identified that the actual RV location will be, will be level. And the other one that we revised was the stormwater prevention pollution plan that we noted. They had actually referred that they acknowledged that that is needed. And that, in this recommendation, I, I just suggested that a copy of the permit should be sent to the Town of Gregg Planning Board and Zoning Officer prior to construction. We've also identified that the electricity that is provided to each of the RV sites, I couldn't tell by the site plan or by the description that it was going to be anything other than a light post, but it's highly suggested that power boxes are added for the camper sites to mitigate any potential noise concerns that could be caused by generators. I can read through all of the new, like, all of the current conditions that I'm recommending that the board at least look at. Does anybody else have any other suggestions that maybe we haven't discussed in the past?
And what's the status for the town planning board?
They have accepted the application as complete. So that just means, that just gives them the opportunity to send it to us for review. When you submit your recommendations, like, once we solidify those recommendations, I'll send them over to the Town of Gregg Planning Board and they will review. Your recommendations add to, if they super, if they over, overdraw your recommendations, they can do so by a super majority vote. So it's, it's in their hands, but it's likely that they will take your recommendations. And/or add to.
I don't personally have anything to add. Does anybody else? Pretty much all. All right, I'm gonna go through your...
I'll go through my list just to make everything a lot clearer, okay guys? So, the, the county planning department recommends, if this board were to approve this referral, that they approve so with the following conditions. One, while the submitted site plan identifies that the woods will remain between the road line and the camp setbacks, according to Article Six, subsection six fifty-five, adequate landscaping should be provided along all public roads. Since there do not appear to be plans for additional roadfront screening, the action, or the Town of Gregg Planning Board should review the existing screening to verify whether the action would be adequately screened. Number two, while the seeker does not, does note an anticipated driveway permit application date of April first, 2021, prior to construction, evidence of a Lewis County Highway Department driveway permit should be provided to the Town of Gregg Planning Board and Zoning Enforcement Officer. Number three, it is suggested that the western driveway is designated as an entry and an eastern driveway is designated as an exit to the facility. Additionally, it is suggested there is one-way traffic flow for the cabin portion of the project area. Number four, as noted in Article Six, subsection six fifty-five E, access to all sites shall be consistent with the standards set forth in the policy and standards for entrances to state highways as revised, published by the New York State Department of Transportation. Number five, prior to the installation of the reference sign, compliance with Article Five, subsection five forty is required. Number six, the applicant has noted that there will be ten acres of ground disturbance, and since any land disturbance over one acre in size requires compliance with New York State DDC regulations, a speed ease permit, the FEAF notes a projected application date of April first, 2021 for said permit. Number seven, while there is a bathhouse proposed for the project, the applicant should confirm that this facility will provide at least one toilet, lavatory, and shower for each sex in order to comply with Article Six, subsection six fifty-five F. Number eight, as noted in Article Six, six fifty-five F, all water supply and sewage dispersal systems shall comply with the applicable standards of this law, Town Sanitary Code, and New York State Department of Health and Environmental Conservation requirements before any permit is issued for occupancy. Number nine, while the FEAF does note an anticipated New York State SWIP application date of April first, prior to construction, a copy of the permit should be sent to the Town of Gregg Planning Board and Zoning Enforcement Officer. Number ten, the Town of Gregg Planning Board should confirm and/or request that the onsite electrical utility will also include power boxes for the camper sites. This will mitigate any potential noise concerns that could be caused by the use of generators. And number eleven, our standard compliance with all local state regulatory requirements for this type of facility. I also wanted to make mention that I reached out to Robert McKenzie, the Art Emergency, Art Emergency Management Director, for a comment, and he said he reviewed this with a three G fire chief informally and said he had no concerns. From a fire coordinator standpoint, provisions for campfire reigns at each site is highly recommended. From an emergency management standpoint, as long as it is not developed into an outdoor venue, concerts, rallies, et cetera, mass gatherings should not be an issue. As long as health codes for campgrounds are followed, this office is good with the plans. So that could be a potential addition if you see it necessary. I also want to note to the people who came today and did not come in, in November, we did our due diligence with the APA, with the New York State Department of Health, and with New York State DDC and questioned all of these variables. And they assured us that their permitting process would answer any and all of your questions as related to the water. And DOH wanted me to reiterate that they would never let somebody use the water to an extent where it would harm the neighboring property. So I do want, if that gives you any better feelings about that, the Department of Health would overregulate that in sense.
Do you know, I mean, that, that was gonna be my question. Does number eight effectively address a large part of the concerns I've heard today?
Yes, I believe so.
Do you, do you know if they're, you can make do with this study or report that gets put forward?
I'm sure that the engineer would submit all of their plans and, and necessary for the permitting process, and that's how they would make that decision.
Once again, that might go help mediate some of the concerns that they have.
Which is why we wouldn't want anything, or I wouldn't advise you to make, to move forward with construction until that permit is issued. I can quickly share where's my mouse. To zoom out, there are trees. Thank you, Joe. So there were trees added. Keep zooming out and scroll and maybe go up. It's hard because Terry drew this, but there's trees added right here, thirty-three trees, and that's something we had asked them to add last time. And one of the comments made note that, you know, they're working through talking about the fencing, and that's something that the town board can certainly ask for. But they have added thirty-three trees there. That's basically what I wanted to show you there. You have all seen the site plans. Does anybody have any other? Additions?
Does anybody here in the board have anything they wish to add, bring up, comments to this? No?
Would the board like to add Robert McKenzie's suggestion for campfire rings at each campsite?
And that actually makes a lot of sense.
I will add that for the twelve conditions.
No? Long addition to that, get a motion to approve?
Approve with the twelve conditions.
With the, with the additional condition is already. Eleven here and twelve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And against? They're moved. Okay. Okay. Report of the county planner.
I have received no responses this month.
Do we have any unfinished business to bring up right now? No, no stuff? No? Does anybody have any new business to bring up?
I will share that we've already received a referral for next month for the Town of Watson, Capri, at some point.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the adjournments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Only a second.
Oh, there you go, actually, all right. All in favor? Thank you all. Good to go.
Thank you.
Drink all of my wine. Thank you.